Like, that's so serious.
We've got two more minutes until official time. Okay, it's six o'clock. We are excited to call this meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I have an invocation this evening. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we're not only leaders but also servants above anything else, and that it is our responsibility and ours alone to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and the courage to know what is to do, to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we always speak out when it's time to speak out, but listen carefully, patiently, and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love in our wonderful community of San Marcos. Amen. Okay. Could we please have the roll call, Mr. Scollack? Sorry, I caught you off-guard.
That's okay. Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. And our first, we have one presentation by our amazing District Attorney, Summer Stephan. She's going to be presenting the Shelter Ready presentation. So all of you will actually find out what's happening with homeless, so you will all get educated. So, hello, District Attorney Stephan. Thank you and welcome for, well, thank you for coming, first of all.
Well, it's absolutely wonderful to be in San Marcos and before you, Mayor, and council members, and everyone in the community. It's such a joy to come in and see the bright future behind me. I'm Summer Stephan, San Diego County's District Attorney. With me is Yoli Apolategui, our Director of Community and Government Affairs. And I understand that San Marcos, in the spirit of innovation, is interested in hearing about Shelter Ready, which is a new technology innovation that we worked with the community on that will make sheltering human beings that need shelter much more efficient, and also provide cities with data as to what type of person could we not shelter and why, so that the investments in supporting our homeless folks is much more targeted and efficient. So as a little background as to why the District Attorney's Office is interested in this, this is something that we've been interested in since 2018, which is looking at this intersection of public safety and homelessness, mental health and addiction, which we know that every one of our 18 cities that I have the honor of serving tackle with. So we did a blueprint for mental health reform, and we set out some goals, and you could see that these goals were meeting one by one. One of them was realizing that we're not really capitalizing on efficiency in terms of technology, technologies that we were already using to shelter victims of crime. As you well know, Mayor, we use it in the Family Justice Center. We've been able to lower the time to shelter a victim who's desperate to leave because of domestic violence or human trafficking from 10 days to eight minutes using a nonprofit technology company called TechSoup. We've been doing that since 2020, and we wanted to see if we can expand that to the entirety of the homeless population, to create a regional solution. We also wanted to expand programs in court that address this intersection. This came in the form of Prop 36. As you know, there's a treatment mandated felony, and we're on course to provide those treatments. However, the funding is deficient, and it's something that we are working to make sure we get enough funding. So why is this important for public safety? And I'll just gonna share a couple of quick data points that our brilliant senior intelligence data person did for us. And one statistic that's compelling is in our homeless population, the, this is from the Coroner, people are dying on the street from overdoses at 132 times higher rate than in the non-homeless population. So it's very difficult to argue that addiction is not a part of the issue that we're facing on the streets. And with that comes mental health, so it's the intersection of mental health, addiction, and homelessness. Of course, there's trauma, there's child abuse, there's domestic violence that drives many people to the street, but addiction is a big part of it. We then looked at victimization, and this is so sad and truly concerning. Folks on the street who are homeless are victims of murder at 64 times higher rate than someone who is not homeless. We have sadly some very sadistic murderers who choose that target thinking we're not gonna care with law enforcement to solve those cases. And of course, they're wrong, because we care about those cases and we bring them to justice. But also on the offender's side, this is also compelling data that we presented, let me see, we presented to the United States Supreme Court. And that's the statistic about arson. Arson is caused and charged by my office with homeless folks at 305 times higher rate than in the non-homeless population. This is because encampments and other non-structured facilities are a reason for arson, and that's a big problem for us here. Residential burglary also is 175 higher rate for our homeless population. So of course, this means we have to act, not just because compassion demands it, to make sure that people are housed, but also because it is a public safety issue for both the folks who are homeless and the surrounding neighborhoods. So this is why we asked on an early morning, I got on a call with the Safe Shelter folks that have helped shelter our victims, and said, if we were able to pull some asset forfeiture money, this is money that we get from drug dealers, to fund an expansion of this, could we pull it off? And with the help of the community, all of these different organizations came together, including your Sheriff's Department, and we were able to have the technology company design on paper what would make their life more efficient. And as you can see, this is how the room looked like, a room of collaboration. At the end, they came up with Shelter Ready, and it is very simple. Think of it as a hotels.com or Expedia, where hotels input the number of available shelters, and they put a designation of what it can house. Is it housed, is it enough to have, is it okay to have a pet, to have children? Is it an elderly person that can't climb to a second-story bunk? And so then instantly, you're able to, in the field, match the homeless person with available shelter, like a hotels.com, in minutes, instead of hours and days. When you lose their yes becomes a no, because they're back in a cycle of addiction and mental health. So this is exactly how it looks like. It also allows you to collect data as to who was not sheltered. You make a reservation, just like a hotel. It holds it for you for 24 hours to get the person to the shelter. And so far, as you could see here, all of these agencies are using it already. And at the end of the day, your Sheriff's Department is using it. 319 current users, 185 are being vetted to enter the process of having that simple app on their phone that can be updated. And we're hopeful that in less than a year, we'll actually have more efficient sheltering of human beings on our streets, but we'll also have the data to tell us what is missing in our inventory, so we can spend the money, because I know you're very careful about how you spend your money, we can spend it in alignment with the needs that are out there. So I'm excited about this project, and we already have reports from Catholic charities that it has lowered their time for their outreach workers from 40 hours a week to 15 hours a week, with 35 more hours that they're now using to actually shelter more people and provide more comprehensive services. That's 10 minutes, or it's actually nine minutes. So do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, District Attorney Stephan. I just want to thank you for everything that you do for our communities. I mean, you're a top law enforcement person, and you've got this very kind side to you. And I really appreciate, too, that you're bringing the predators of our homeless to justice, because that's really important, all of the things that are happening to them, and then also making sure that we are trying to help them as much as possible to get them in shelter. Do any of the council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, District Attorney, for being here today. This is such a timely presentation, and I'm so glad that we have a room full of residents here to listen to this important information. So very timely, thank you. So just a couple of questions, because this is something that, that I have to navigate along with a lot of our residents here in the city. So this is great that we've done so much work to be efficient and to help the residents that are in need of shelter. I'm looking at the list of participating organizations that we have in the, in the slide that you showed. How did these organizations come to be a part of the existing program?
We, basically, we, we did a design phase where we invited every shelter provider, as well as the natural users that would be helping folks get into shelter. So everybody was invited. Not everybody came to the table. Change is sometimes difficult, and, but the people who were in the room was very comprehensive between fire and safety and outreach workers and shelters, and they helped design what they needed, because they were using sticky notes. And when their, their referral kind of goes away, then they're not able, they have to look for that referral. That was the main complaint. But it's, it's not, it hasn't stopped. Like I said, you just go to shelterready.org, and if there's an organization that wants to use it and should be using it because they help the homeless, that's all they have to do is put in their name on Shelter Ready, and someone will contact them and begin the process of onboarding them. This is also free. It's available to everybody. I won't be owning the data. It'll be available to everyone transparently. So everything about this is not exclusive. It's meant to be the maximum use.
Okay, thank you for that. So then, my next question is, is there some sort of waitlist for organizations to join, or what's that vetting look like?
There's a lot in the pipeline, and the vetting is actually very fast. But what's slowing it down is that what you don't want is to create frustration. We want to make sure the number of people that are using the app matches the available shelters that are putting, put into the app. That way, you can, it's just like if there's not enough hotel rooms in availability, you're gonna be frustrated trying to book something. So the tech company is working on matching both systems. So that slows down the process a little bit, but, you know, it's, it's moving along. Like I said, 315 have now, are using it on their phones, and many more, 180 or so are in process.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, the other thing that I'm thinking through, obviously, because I think we have a lot of needs still that's unmet, at least the circumstances where I've had the opportunity to help individuals navigate some of this, it seems like we're still very short on the availability of shelter beds. So how are we actively looking to, to expand what we do, the resources that we do have?
Yeah, Councilmember, that is the, the big question. And the reality is, we always say that we don't have enough shelter beds, and that's likely very true. But we, we don't have a definitive figure. We don't have a regional solution before this, where you're able at the end of the year to look and say, there is, you know, 200 people that we could not find, they were willing, but we could not find a shelter bed for them. And specifically, what does that shelter look like? Some people can't be in congregate environments. They have, you know, different mental illnesses that don't allow that. Some people have disabilities, trauma, other things. So it'll give us that information. It's gonna take some time to gather this information. It's getting gathered as we speak, because every time there's a match made that goes in, if the person arrives at the shelter, that also goes in, because sometimes you make a match, but if the person doesn't get there and isn't enrolled, then that counts against an effective sheltering. So I'm looking forward to that data. I can't tell you right now what the answer will be. I think the answer will be, from just talking to people on the ground, that we don't have enough shelters, but we have unused shelter that is not being efficiently used.
Okay, thank you for that. So one of the things that I do know, just for the benefit of the residents that are here, so if there is somebody that's in need of a bed, what does that look like? Do they have to come to city staff in order to navigate that? Do they have to go to the District Attorney? Or what, what would somebody do?
Yeah, so that would be Phase Two, that we are already working on, which is to create, in like a public library, or in whatever the city decides is the right place, a kiosk where the person who's unsheltered themselves can come and get help as to what's the available shelter. That's Phase Two of this, which is gonna be very easy to accomplish. Phase One is to have the professionals, like fire and safety and outreach workers and shelters and ER, emergency rooms that are releasing people without shelter, have all those professionals get this app going. That's the focus. But Phase Two, which should happen right after, is what you're talking about, allowing a person who's unsheltered themselves, who are ready, to come to a public location that every city can decide what suits them, that has a kiosk with a helper, a user, a navigator in there.
Thank you for that valuable information, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My question was answered. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, and then just one last thing. Thank you, really, for all that you do to keep our vulnerable population safe, and, you know, bringing justice to the victims, but also prosecuting the criminals, because it means a lot to us. I mean, everyone wants to feel safe, so we really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. And you started this here, so Family Justice Center. Now we're gonna have one in South Bay, because of the great example you all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. So Councilmember LeBlanc is a little bit slower walking down today. She had emergency back surgery recently, and look at her, she's here this evening, because she loves serving our community that much. So if you need to leave, if she needs to leave, or she gets uncomfortable, she might get up, but I just wanted to let you all know. Anyway, I am so excited that we get to recognize again Red Ribbon Week here in San Marcos. And I'd like to bring down Letty Robles and Casey Strang to say a few words, and then also Mimi Van Canet and David Escavito from the Youth Advocacy Coalition. Thank you for all being here.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, San Marcos Schools. This is definitely a tradition for over 10 years. We've been filling this room with different representatives from school, and since we started our effort of reducing alcohol and drug use among youth and advocating for self, for a healthy community and environment, the school district has been one of the biggest collaborators. So thank you so much.
Great. Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the San Marcos Prevention Coalition, and thank you to the mayor and the city council members. A special thanks to the school administrators for getting your families here today, and of course, the parents and the students for being here. Thank you so much. Well-deserved to be spotlighted for your great decisions to be drug and alcohol-free, so thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here. We, my program, we're North Inland Substance Use Prevention. We actually cover a lot of the north San Diego County region. I just want to say, for Red Ribbon and prevention and all the hard work that goes into this, San Marcos is the best, so.
Okay, all right. So everyone, are you excited to be here? Yes. Okay, we also have, actually, this is for the Youth Advocacy Coalition. Okay, we'll have you come back after the schools, I guess. Okay, and then San Marcos Unified School District. Do we have a representative here this evening? Hello. Good to see you. Christine, did you want to say a few words, or not? I think you should.
Can I ask the principals that are here to join me for this photo op?
That's a great, I only, I only know one that's here this evening. Oh, there's three.
I see a couple, but four, four, okay. Wonderful, welcome. Thank you. Yes, and I will share that San Marcos Unified is in the top five school districts in San Diego.
Well, that's, that's. Okay, now we're gonna have all the kids come down. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call off the name of the school. Correo Elementary. Come on down. Ooh, look how many there are. Oh, 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 wait, high fives, high five. It's good to see you guys. Thank you for coming tonight, but you can leave after you're done. Oh, even better. That's my thing. I love it. Okay, it's okay. We know, it's all good. I'm gonna give you this, and then we're, did they want to say something, or? Okay, all right, so we're gonna have you come over here. We have to be careful with Councilmember LeBlanc, because she's a little bit fragile this evening. The kindness ambassadors, how excellent is that? Don't think we have anyone from Discovery Elementary this evening, do we? We do. Okay, Discovery Elementary. Hey, congratulations. Okay, I think we're gonna have you come right back over here. Julianne Leachtag? Not this evening. Nob Hill Elementary, no, yes. I saw Principal Sannella here this evening, so I know that for sure.
Good job, guys. Thank you for coming out tonight.
If you have your camera up, we're going to try to stay still. Okay, La Costa Meadows Elementary. That was your brother? Oh, okay. I saw a student taking it. I thought, who's that? It was one of our siblings. Okay, Paloma Elementary. Richland Elementary. Santa La Joa Elementary. That's right, we can clap for them, even though they're not here. They probably have a test tomorrow. San Marcos Elementary. Twin Oaks Elementary. Santa La Joa Middle School. Oh my goodness, it looks like a whole team. Oh my goodness, it looks like a whole team. Wow. It's a lot of parents that helped get them here today. Thank you for that. All right, San Marcos Middle School. Gold star, A for effort. Woodland Park Middle School. Double Peak Middle School. La Marada Academy. Thank you for coming. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Good job. Ooh, they have a good showing, too. Nice. All right. Thanks for coming, guys. It's so awesome. Foothills High School. Twin Oaks High School. San Marcos High School. Well, we've got one left. And I know Mrs. Baker's here, so Mission Hills High School. Come on down. Good to see you guys. Thanks for coming. Hi, hello. Good to see you. Oh my gosh, wow. You're getting a high five. That's so awesome. All right, we're a little short. We might have to do a couple of rows. Yes.
I just want to say that you never know which schools are gonna come. Sometimes they have a high presence, other times they don't. But principals, if you know the principals from those schools, please let them know that we were sad to mention their name and not see them present. But they will all receive the proclamation and hopefully they can present it at their flag salute. Thank you.
And I want to let you all know, you can leave now. We do appreciate you coming and we love celebrating you because it is important, Red Ribbon Week. Did you, did you have something you wanted to say, Casey? You looked like you wanted to say something, and I think you should.
So one, I hope you noticed the poster we have out in the lobby on the way out because there's an interesting data point. And so maybe you can take a picture of it and just read it. But what it says is, there's a misconception that once you get to high school, that everyone's using drugs in high school. But the reality is that the vast majority of teens choose to be drug and alcohol free. And from a very well-known survey that we take here in San Marcos and throughout the state of California, shows that over 70% of high schoolers have been drug and alcohol free, meaning they've never tried alcohol, never abused any sort of drugs. So that's a really high number. And so we want to let the kids know that the vast majority of our teens here in San Marcos do not do drugs. They make a really great decision to be safe and healthy. And so we want to encourage you all to make that decision as well. So again, the posters in the foyer, and if you want to take a photo of it, that'd be great. Thank you.
I did omit to do one thing, and that is read the proclamation because I was so excited to see everyone. So here's what it says. It says, "Red Ribbon Week offers the citizens an opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and the San Marcos City Council has made a strong commitment to alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention education and activities. We recognize that alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, drug use can bring alienation, academic failure, violence, and hopelessness to the youth of San Marcos. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, join other cities throughout the nation to declare October 23 through the 31st, 2025 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all citizens to join our commitment to a healthy, drug-free community in which to raise a generation of healthy, drug-free youth." Thank you. And I do have one more proclamation that I wanted to give to the Youth Advocacy Coalition because Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through 31, is a life, life is a puzzle, solve it, drug-free. Red Ribbon Week offers the citizens the opportunity, and I did read this before, but we wanted to, we wanted you to come down because these, these kids, I don't know if you, if you know, but they do a lot of work with our law enforcement, the Youth Advocacy Coalition. They do a lot of work with our law enforcement to help bring out the community, to bring them together. And come on over here. You're, you could, we're gonna give you high fives, too. Come on over. I think you might want to say something. And you should, because why don't you talk a little bit about what they do on a regular basis? And you, and you give a lot of time and effort, so we really do appreciate that. It's a commitment.
Yeah, so part of our program, we love to work with the youth because we understand just like tonight's room, youth's voices are so powerful. Not only, you know, everyone says they're the future, but I believe that they're the now. And I think that using these youth, they're just, they're volunteers, and they just come and they actually give up their lunchtime. Out of all the time of school, they give up their lunchtime to come hang out with us. But we strategize and we plan to make their campus safe. They're, they're a campus-specific group. But then we, they said, you know what, let's do more work outside of that. Right now, they actually got their principal on board to have prevention messaging running year-round on their marquee. So there's, you drive by Mission Hills, there's gonna be prevention messaging there. They work with the San Marcos sheriffs. They've even got so eager to the work, prevention work that they do, they even help out Escondido Police Department to DUI checkpoints. So they're, they're there till like midnight doing DUI checkpoints with the police officers. And so they're just an amazing group of young people. Some of them have been doing this for three, almost four years. And so I'm just proud of them and the work that they do. They make me look like I do good stuff, but it's really, I wouldn't be able to do what I do without them. And Mimi says, Mimi echoes everything that I say. Thank you.
Okay, just a, is everyone okay? Sorry, I'm a little protective, so I have to make sure Councilmember LeBlanc's okay. Okay, so Hispanic Heritage Month is this month. I'm not sure if you knew that. So we have a couple of proclamations. Let's see, we have Amber Tarek and Richard Lopez, founder Fuego, and Natalie Aguilar from Universidad Popular to accept these. Hello. Thank you. It's good to see you. Good to see you. Congratulations. Thank you. You've got your red on. My red suit was at the cleaners, so I couldn't wear it. And good to see you. Yeah, thank you for coming. I got this. I actually have three, so. Couple. Okay, let me read that real quick, not like last time. "The Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September 15th to October 15th, celebrating the rich histories, culture, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. Whereas, the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period recognizing the independence anniversaries of several Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. Whereas, Hispanic Americans have played a vital role in shaping our nation through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, and have made lasting contributions to the fields of education, business, science, the arts, public service, the military, and much more. We honor the generations of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our country and inspired others to achieve the American dream, while acknowledging the ongoing struggles for equity, representation, and opportunity within our communities. We reaffirm the commitment to creating an inclusive society where diversity is celebrated, voices are heard, and cultural heritage is honored. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of San Marcos, and encourage all of our residents of San Marcos to recognize the achievements and contributions of our Hispanic Americans, past, present, and future." Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna have you come on over here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. And last, but certainly not least, we have Firefighter Appreciation Month. You get to come on down. So we weren't sure if everyone would be able to stay this evening because they're actually working, so they're on call. So if they get a call and they have to leave, they're gonna have to leave pretty quickly. So I'll try to read this very quickly. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Oh, yeah, I prefer high fives, too. On a side note, there was a chili cook-off this last weekend at Biggs Harley-Davidson. You should have tasted their chili. I got to be a judge. It did get the grand prize. It was, it was great. And it was not an insider job. You guys, it was amazing. Anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Firefighter Appreciation Month. Firefighters in the City of San Marcos demonstrate exceptional bravery, professionalism, and dedication in protecting life, property, and the environment through rapid emergency response and expert care. Fire service personnel respond not only to fires, medical emergencies, and national disasters, but also serve as educators and leaders in fire prevention, public safety, and community preparedness. The San Marcos Fire Department plays a critical role in ensuring the safety and resilience of the community, often operating in harm's way for the benefit of others. The commitment and sacrifice of firefighters have saved countless lives and minimized the impact of emergency throughout San Marcos and the greater north county, San Diego region. The City Council recognizes the importance of honoring and celebrating the service during this month of October, and encourages all of our residents to express appreciation for the service and sacrifice of these dedicated individuals. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Firefighter Appreciation Month, and call upon all of our residents, businesses, and community organizations to recognize and honor invaluable contributions that our local fire department serves. Let this month serve as meaningful reminder of the courage, compassion, and unwavering commitment demonstrated by those who protect the community every single day, 24 hours a day. The City Council further encourages acts of recognition, support, and gratitude toward firefighters and the fire department staff throughout the month and beyond. And one little secret, well, it's not really a secret, but we have a Class 1 fire agency, which means they are the best of the best. About 1% nationally actually reach a Class 1 fire agency status. And we have, we have made that back in 2021, I think it was. Anyway, thank you very much for being here this evening, and make sure you think of firefighter today. We actually have someone that wants to say something.
So we just want to thank you all on behalf of Chief Baron. He couldn't be here this evening. That this very small subsection of our department, the rest are all out at their stations running calls, but we, we do appreciate the recognition. We would be doing this regardless. We love what we do. We love serving the community, and it's a very dedicated group of individuals within our department. So we would do it anyways, but thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Okay, you might all need to get in the back, and we might need to get in the front. All right, now down to our All right, now down to our consent calendar, I think. I'm not making fun of you. I try not to make you laugh. I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure you're okay. Just let me be the mom. That's my thing. I'm so sorry. Anyway, okay, we are moving on to our consent calendar. Do we have any items that any members of the City Council wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent counter.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Okay, we have some oral communications. Thank you, Mickey. Okay, first up is Natalie Aguilar from Universidad Popular, followed by C. Chen, followed by W. Steiner. Yes? Okay. Okay, all right. First up is going to be Natalie Aguilar. Hello, Natalie.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you again. We're honored to receive the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. And thank you for this recognition. It affirms not just our work, but the strength, dignity, and leadership that already exist in our community. We look forward to continuing this work together. Thank you. And now for my public comment. Good evening again. For the record, I'm Natalie Aguilar. I'm a community educator with Universidad Popular, and here to provide our on-the-record updates and also some information on our upcoming events. First is our recap of the San Marcos Fire Department Fire Station Number One Open House. We attended and tabled the San Marcos Fire Department Fire Station Number One Open House the morning of Saturday, October 4th. We estimate that we had about 500 people pass by our table, and we were able to inform them about emergency preparedness. We look forward to collaborating with the City of San Marcos and the San Marcos Fire Department for future events. On Wednesday, October 8th, we collaborated with the City of San Marcos Economic Development Department, the Small Business Development Center, and Business Partners to support outreach for the entrepreneurship fair that was held on Wednesday, October 8th. We had over 50 attendees. This was a great event, and we look forward to collaborating for future events. And then third is gonna be information about our Day of the Dead Workshop Series. We started the Day of the Dead Workshop Series this past Wednesday with our History of the Day of the Dead that had over 100 attendees. We are thankful for our collaboration with Restoration Abbey. We will continue to have workshops that honor and continue the legacy of our departed loved ones. Our next workshop is a Papel Picado workshop on Wednesday, October 15th. Then on Wednesday, October 22nd, we have a Sugar Skulls workshop, followed by an Afrenda workshop on Wednesday, October 29th. We conclude this series on Thursday, October 30th, with a celebration for Day of the Dead. All events are from 6:00 to 8:00, out of our office on Autumn Drive. We hope you can join us. And then next up, about our food pantry. We continue to have our food pantry serving community members in our area. We are experiencing increased needs and demand for food, housing, transportation, and other critical needs, especially among elders and agricultural workers. Donations are always welcome at our pantry on Autumn Drive. Fifth is a recap on our civics program. We continue to rent the community room to host civics education classes every Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you for the partnership with the City of San Marcos, whose collaboration makes our mission of empowering the community through civic engagement possible. And those were my, that was my public comment for today. Thank you, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, up next is C. Chen, and we don't really, you can't really, sorry. Yes, yes, yes. But, but we don't actually have a way to give your time to someone else. So how about Mr. Chen? I just give you five minutes? Would that work for you?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, perfect. We'll set the timer for five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and esteemed council members. My name is C. Chen. I'm the current president of the Skylark Homeowners Association, representing our new community of 89 homes on Northwest Postus Road, and including over 40 acres of natural land surrounding Quail Valley Lake, which was to be set aside as an open space preserve for our entire San Marcos community. We appeared before you all in January of this year to ask for your help. Our developer, Lennar, was to have prepared this open space to be turned over for management by Fallbrook Land Conservancy, with required fencing, signage, and remediation. Unfortunately, this was not done. I think we, we showed some pictures last time we were here. There were encampments, there was evidence of bonfires, et cetera. So it was a safety hazard. But thanks to your efforts in January, Lennar initiated work on the city trail running through our community. Although installation of the fencing and signage around the lake had not started, we were hopeful and patient. Then in early August, work on the city trail abruptly stopped, and Lennar had not returned our good-faith efforts at transparent communications. We reached out to our Director of the City Planning Division, Joseph Faraci, and our wonderful City Manager, Michelle Bender, who addressed our concerns with compassion, dedication, and resolve. All the city staff members with whom our community has had the pleasure of interacting, Kyreen Chua, Oscar Rincon, Tim Hines, and Edith Santana, amongst others, have all been wonderful partners to work with. With their efforts, I'm really extremely happy to report that as of this Saturday morning, work on the city trail has recommenced. We want to thank all of our city staff for being such outstanding partners and advocates for our community. And we want to again thank you, our City Council, and other city leaders, including Isaac Jamendi, for empowering them and guiding them. We also want to thank Lennar for doing the hard thing, for deciding that restarting efforts to fulfill their obligations to their community was important despite financial headwinds. Even with this good news on the city trail, our open space preserve is still not complete. The fences and the warning signs around the lake, after over a year of waiting, still have not been installed. This unprotected area remains a safety hazard, not only to our surrounding communities, but also to those who trespass into this space. We come to you, our City Council members, to again ask for your help. We wish to continue to build upon this momentum that our dedicated city staff has achieved. Please use your powers at your disposal to encourage Lennar to continue to collaborate with all of us, including our HOA, Fallbrook Land Conservancy, and the city, to find a path forward that benefits us all. The Skylark Open Space Preserve needs to be completed and managed appropriately for this beautiful land to be an asset that San Marcos deserves, not the safety risk that it continues to be. I want to thank you, Mayor Jones, all the esteemed council members, for your continued help and support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much. And I know that staff will continue following through. We're quite good at that, so even when things are sometimes difficult. And this evening, we are introducing an ordinance that talks a little bit about encampments on city property and increased fire risks. So we're going to be seeing that this evening because we do take our open space and encampments very seriously. And we want to make sure that everyone's safe, and so just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Steiner, you don't need to speak, correct?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. Liz Santos is up next, followed by Marlene Walder, and then Andy Amador. Welcome, Liz.
Can I hand this to the city clerk to pass out?
Absolutely, yes, yes. They'll come and get that from you. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones, and council members and city staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Liz Santos. I'm here to report and document a third request, a near loss of life and serious safety issue that occurred on the afternoon of September 25th, 2025, at 140 East Barham. The conditions posed an immediate threat to life and property. Despite prior notifications to city departments and staff, no preventative action has been taken, and the hazard remains unaddressed. The improvement activity conducted by our neighbor, a near miss of hitting my 81-year-old mother with construction debris without notification, safety, or written approval has resulted in fear, health concerns, safety concerns, property damage, and a clear violation of our rights. I respectfully request that this incident be entered into public record, that all inspections, enforcement, documentation from the date to be preserved, and that city take immediate steps to mitigate ongoing risk in the area, removing all private improvement work over our property rights not approved by the property owners at 140 East Barham. To be removed within the easement area per our record grant deed and the conditions of approval, ATPM, the TPM 190001. Public safety and accountability must remain a top priority. Mayor Jones, you had shared in previous council meetings how you live, used to live off an easement, and understood the requirements for written sign-off for any proposed impacting work within said easement. We look for you and the elected officials to take swift action. Thank you for your time, attention, and your continual service to the community of San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Staff, you're aware of this, correct? We're working on it, I would assume? Yes. Okay, and our city attorney. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next up, Marlene Walder, followed by Andy Amador. Welcome.
Mayor Jones and City Council, I'm here on a slightly different subject. We made the top, and I don't know if it was the top three or top 10, fire, non-fire, wait. Largest risk at having fires in our community with the danger risk, which has increased insurance policies and has made many of the new homeowners, even in our mobile home park, have to take out that new mobile, not mobile, but new insurance for fire dangers separate from their policies. And it's $450 a year because we don't own the land for just the mobile home. And then you still have to carry insurance with proof that you have that insurance. We are putting in higher and higher density. I can't say that's what raised the risk. It was the fire that we had quite a while ago, too. So I'm surprised it just came up this year, this fire risk. But I think we are the top three with the biggest danger. And so San Marcos in general has now a rating that has increased insurance policies. We are putting in so many homes into Barham itself, the new one that's going in by Grace Church and the one that's by Myers. And we already had a problem when there was the fire and the evacuation. My other comment was we evacuated to the high school, and there were no outlets for people who had to sleep there, me, for our medical equipment that had to be used for breathing or at night use. The gym turns out to have a plug that they could find for people to plug into. They didn't even know where outlets were. But evidently, a gym doesn't have many electrical outlets where people are gonna be sleeping on cots in the middle of the gym. The other thing is you're putting in for Santa Leo. I don't know if it has been approved yet. But if there's absolutely no exit, except the one that they're talking about, that makes the fire even more, the residents not being able to get out of the fire conveniently because Barham was closed down. We couldn't get back to our houses when the fire did occur on Coronado. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Marlene. And just a quick question of staff. Fire hazard maps are adopted by the county of San Diego, correct?
I believe that they're issued by the state and adopted by the county.
Correct, yes. And they are, they cover it. Like, we don't, we don't have anything to say over that, but I was just asking for clarification.
Just also point of clarification.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
City Manager, Lender, are we, we're not changing any evacuation routes in Santa Leo, right? I'm not aware of any.
No, we don't officially have evacuation routes because every emergency will require its own evacuation pattern. So the Genesis app is what we really encourage our residents to download because when there's an evacuation, that Genesis app will be the most expeditious and safest way to help guide our residents out.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes timing and evacuation actual route. And yes, depending on exactly where the fire is located, law enforcement and fire will determine that at that time. Anyway, thank you, Marlene. And then Andy Amador, welcome.
Is it okay by time myself? Was that okay with you guys as well? Or is there a limit timewise?
Yes, we have a three-minute.
Got it.
Let me guess.
I'd like to say thank you for having me here. Respectful councilman, I'm really nervous. This is my first time up here. I work in San Marcos, but I kind of lived here. But I was coming here to put a request or a proposal. I, I work for Willgrove Properties in Linda Vista, 1550 District, 1560. It currently runs from, I wish I could have drawn it out, but from Mr. Lucardi Construction all the way down to Pacific. There's, it's industrial area. And this past year, it was repaid, it was redone, looks great, looks amazing. But they took out the median that was there for, for I don't know what reason. But my concern being that I worked there, that my big delivery trucks for my industrial area that goes to the back, were kind of now robbed from that median that was in the middle. So I don't know, I just wanted to present it to you guys, see if I'm at your guys' mercy, if you guys can do anything about it. I have talked to city council, the engineers, and they said that it was designed that way so they can slow down traffic. And it's kind of working, I want to say, but at the same time, when the school district comes, when it's in effect, it's just, it's kind of a mesh. But I say that if it can be reevaluated in the future, it would help us in Linda Lamar, but if not, I understand. But I leave myself at your guys' mercy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Can we do, have we been in contact with you as far as like by telephone or email or anything like that?
This is my first time actually trying communicating with you guys in such a way. I mean, I have, I do have your guys' engineers' information, and I have gone back and forth a little, just very little with him, but yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna get your contact information, and then we can have city staff that are experts in this. I reach out to you and see what we can do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Amador, which street was the median removed from?
The median was removed from, it's Linda Vista Drive.
Linda Vista?
Yes, it's right in front of Lucardi Construction, KP Pools, and Mr. Joe Free, which is a big, it's a large amount. Because as soon as you cross this, you go through the second street, past Pacific, the median there, the median is still there. It still exists there. So the reason, like I said, and I don't want to take up too much of the time, is that they said, they told me that it's to help, you know, to prevent the flow of traffic. Because a lot of people were just really zooming through that thing. And it's really critical because when it's, when school's back on in session, it becomes a real strong area of just traffic. And a lot of kids are going, parents. But it's very dangerous because it's an industrial area. We, I have guys from the, from the, from my piping company that has big commercial pipes that go through the very back. And it, and it really can slow traffic. It can be a blind spot, and it can cause some real damage towards everybody. It's just, it's just an accident waiting to happen.
I'll drive by there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm very familiar with this street, so can I be looped into whatever staff responds? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Yes, of course. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Ordinance 2025-1565, amending the San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.33, Encampments on City Property, to address increased ten point three-three, encampments on city property to address increased incidence of fire in or near encampment areas. I think our city attorney is going to be presenting, and we do have an update unless, in the event that everyone didn't see it, it is the red line version, and that has been provided this evening.
It was also posted to the website, and there are copies in the rear for folks who might not have seen that, that version.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proposed for the city council's consideration this evening is an amendment to the encampment ordinance, which was adopted in July of twenty twenty-four. That ordinance made it illegal to camp on public property. The twenty twenty-four ordinance also included prohibitions as to certain activities relating to waterways, such as camping in them, modifying vegetation, like, you know, tacking things to trees, moving boulders or rocks, destroying pathways, or reconfiguring the natural landscape, digging in the waterways, and/or storing housing or holding waste, or illicitly discharging the same into waterways and/or the city, the city's stormwater conveyance system. And as noted by District Attorney Stefan this evening during her shelter-ready presentation, the unhoused account for three hundred and five times the normal rates for arson as compared to the housed population. And prompted by the fires that were experiencing, experienced by the city and its first responders, both fire and the Sheriff's Department in homeless encampment areas, as described in the staff report, the proposed amendment defines the terms ignition source, heating device, and durable medical equipment. And pursuant to a proposed new section ten point three-three point one-three-five would make it illegal to use ignition sources, which is defined as, including heating devices, to cause a fire, maintain a fire, and/or camp while using or possessing an ignition source. The ignition source definition includes just about anything that we could think of that could start a fire. It would also make it illegal to discard any lit, burning, or combustible material that can be, can set fire to vegetation, structures, and/or debris, or to have an ignition source on one's person while in an open space area or watershed-related area or public property. The proposed ordinance exempts durable medical equipment from the definition of ignition source so that the unhoused or anyone who requires such equipment may retain that equipment. It does not, it also doesn't reach to the areas that are utilized for camping and recreation as permitted by Chapter eight point two oh or nine point oh four of the San Marcos Municipal Code, or as permitted, ordered, directed by a regulatory authority with jurisdiction, or as expressly authorized by the city manager. The, we believe that the additions to the twenty twenty-four versions of the ordinance will provide additional tools for first responders who are currently responding to these incidents. The twenty twenty-four ordinance was not intended to be a static document, rather it will bend with the times and increase with our identification of additional issues that we need to address. We believe that making illegal the possession and use of the items that would be prohibited by this ordinance is another resource that, that may assist in maintaining the safety of not only those unhoused persons, because they are the first at risk, but also the other public safety personnel that have to respond to these really, sometimes extremely difficult areas to reach, and also residents and visitors to the city in general. So that's basically it. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. I, I actually do believe this is definitely a document that we will need to update on a fairly regular basis, just depending on things that were trends that we're seeing. And so I definitely agree with you on that. And we have to keep everyone safe, whether it be our homeless, our residents, our businesses, and definitely our safety patrol, I'm sorry, our public safety folks, whether it be law enforcement or fire department, they definitely need to be kept safe, too. So I would, I actually, I'm thinking we look at this on a fairly regular basis because it is definitely, anything that we notice, we should probably, you know, update it. And I mean, it could be even a couple of times a year if we're seeing new trends, because we definitely want to be on top of public safety, because that's always been one of our guiding principles. So I want to make sure we continue doing that. So if you could just always make sure, and any laws or things that are happening statewide, to watch those as well.
Yes.
And then Deputy Mayor, did you have some discussion?
Yeah, you said it very well, and I almost was going to skip my comments, but I just, I do want to just reinforce that, you know, we heard a lot about the concern and how wildfire and arson is top of mind in our community, and this ordinance is a proactive way for us to stay on top of that as a city and protect everybody involved, like the mayor just mentioned, from our public safety professionals to those who are housed and unhoused in our community. And so I'm supportive of this update, and I do also expect that there's going to be a lot of updates as, as we go through the coming year. So thank you.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember LeBlanc.
I just wanted to mention that I actually rode along on one of the homeless outreaches a couple of weeks ago, and I saw firsthand how some of these areas are just prime for wildfires and brush fires. And I think this is a great way to help protect the homeless and just the rest of the community from those types of incidents.
Yes, and it's very dry, our dense vegetation right now. Glad to see that it rained today. It wasn't for a long time, but it, it was good, it wet everything that's been extremely dry, so. And it is fire season, and actually, I think it's more fire season year-round. When it used to be traditional months, it's not that any longer, it's pretty much year-round, especially when we've got dry season. So we definitely want to make sure we're keeping everyone safe. Councilmember Musgrove.
No, Mayor, I just would make a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen sixty-five as it addresses Chapter one zero point three-three of our municipal code.
Yes, the introduction.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any knows? Seeing none. Okay, that's introduced. Moving on to new business, which is Resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-five oh one, addendum to the city manager employment agreement. I think our city attorney is going to.
I can take that on, and the city manager has very FPPC appropriately left the building.
Left the building.
Or left the dais, actually.
Okay.
So she's not participating in this portion of the meeting. The, going on direction from the council's designated labor negotiator, that's Councilmember LeBlanc, we ascertain that the city council might wish to extend the initial term of the city manager's contract for an additional year, so it would now expire on September fourteenth in twenty thirty, and that the city council was desirous of providing an additional three percent base salary contribution to the city's retiree health service savings plan for a total contribution of four percent of base salary for this, this city manager group. And we prepared the addendum to the city manager's employment agreement and trust that that is reflective of the council's intent and presented for your consideration and action this evening.
Okay. Any discussion on that? If not, I make a motion to adopt the Resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-five oh one, the addendum to the city manager employment agreement. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any knows? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Oh, okay, I was wondering if I was going to have to come get you. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is oral, nope, no more oral communications. Then moving on to reports, Sandag. Last week, the main thing was the auditor report regarding H N T B, which was not a positive report. There were over two hundred and fifty findings. We are going to be having back either the end of this year or in January, a full, and staff has, staff at Sandag has agreed with all of the deficiencies that they need to be corrected and what their plan is. However, by the end of the year or early first quarter of next year, we're going to have a full map of how that's going to happen, that it can never happen again, that there are any deficiencies, any unclear reasons that there was a sole source contract awarded, a lot of different issues that we had with that, but we cannot have that again. And, you know, we talked a lot about the broken trust in the community, all of San Diego County, and how we have not done our job as a board in making sure that this didn't happen, and our director, who no longer is with us, was there during a lot of the time. So there's a new sheriff in town with Mario Orso, our new, our new director, but the biggest change is what we were able to get, actually, was something that I brought forward, and that is our Director of Internal Controls, which is much like our lean department here in San Marcos, and that is a, it's, it's actually more than one employee at Sandag, and that is to focus solely on the processes and making sure that we are finding things if the processes are not working correctly ahead of time before there is an, an independent auditor report like we had last week. So making sure that we are doing the right by the citizens of San Diego County and spending the money wisely, and making sure that we are not wasting any of it, because, you know, oftentimes we're not able to actually deliver projects, unfortunately, because we've spent money on all these consulting contracts where they have not even done what they were supposed to do. So it was a, it was a pretty long audit report, though I, you know, a lot of us had already had the information ahead of time, we had asked our questions of staff at Sandag. And again, you know, we're going to be getting a report back either the end of this year or early first quarter to show and prove up that something like this can never happen again. So that was pretty much it. Yes, Councilmember?
I just want to make sure that everybody in the audience and those who are listening at home understand that the driving force uncovering a lot of these malfeasance, the complicity of the executive team at Sandag, who are no longer there, was driven by our mayor, just constantly at it, doing her research, bringing it to light. I would also, with a straight face, say some, some complicit actions by some of the board members who did not want this addressed, they would rather just move on and get along, and the mayor stuck with it. So congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
I read the report, it was very well done.
I don't even remember how many times I asked for it, but it was numerous times. So it was, it, and, and I knew there was an issue, I just didn't know that it would be two hundred and fifty findings. But again, you know, we do have a new director, we do have a new executive team, and I do believe that they're serious about, and, and if they're not serious, I believe they are, but I'm still there and still asking the question, so I, I can be relentless in that, for sure. Anyway, moving on to our next item, which is League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And our current League of California Cities Regional President, Councilmember Nunez, is going to handle that, and I'll take the business visit.
Thank you, Councilmember Musgrove. A lot happening. Last year, we had our annual conference, we were in Long Beach, I was fortunate to be able to attend, and unfortunately, Councilmember LeBlanc was not able to join us, but we did have a great presence, so I just wanted to share a couple of highlights. We have a new executive team that was sworn in. So we have Mayor Pro Tem of El Cerrito, Gabe Quinto, who was sworn in as president of the, of the league. And I want to specifically give a shout out to Councilmember Teresa Costa in the city of Carlsbad, as she was sworn in as first vice president of the league, so that means she's getting ready to take over as president a year from now. So it's great to have that leadership with our neighboring city. And the other highlight that I want to share is that we did have our very own city manager, Michelle Bender, along with Christina Ray, Tina Ray. They were part of a panel that presented, and it was a full house, very timely. I heard a lot of great feedback, they presented on the successful passage of our measure Q, and it was very welcome. It seems like a lot of city are looking to put measure ballots for this upcoming election. And so I want to put our city manager on the spot, see if she can share a little bit about being on the panel and some of the feedback that they received.
Thank you, Councilmember Nunez. Yes, it was an honor to have our presentation selected. I think it was a fairly competitive process, and it was a little daunting to find out we're in the ballroom with four hundred seats, that, that exceeded my expectations.
And it was standing room only.
And when I looked up, it was standing room only, with so many colleagues there to support. Yes, I think the presentation seemed well-received, there was a lot of curiosity, and I think the attendance speaks to the fact that a lot of cities are struggling. And so there is a lot of interest in trying to determine how to move forward in a way that is transparent and reassures the taxpayers that everything's been done. So a lot of the presentation focused on best value analysis and how we turned the couch upside down to make sure that we were not leaving any money on the table, and as a last resort, looking to our residents to help. So yes, it was a great experience, and I'm somewhat relieved it's over.
I have a quick question on that. So how much, you know, because I even said this when I, when I've been at Sandag, you know, when we were talking about the internal controls and the need for an internal controls at Sandag. I mean, very vital, because we, we were spending so much money on all these consultants that literally have no work product to actually show for it. So how much did it come into play, and was there discussion about the lean department and what that, what that brings to the table as far as how we, the San Marcos way? And by the way, we still receive, in the county, the lowest amount of property tax increment. So out of a hundred percent, we receive seven point two percent, whereas the county receives double that, fourteen something percent, I want to say fourteen point four percent. And then they also receive another, I think, two point three percent from San Marcos residents for our library system, so that's, you know, it's almost seventeen percent. So what, what, what came up about that? Did, was that a discussion?
Yes, Christina Ray, our Director of Lean, was the moderator. So the presentation was introduced by Christina, and we did touch on lean, and we mentioned that the very first investment we made with the measure Q dollars was to hire a Director of Lean so that we could focus on leading efficiency, accountability, and engagement to ensure that the public trust was theirs, knowing we would spend that money transparently, and we would make sure that the trust that was bestowed upon us is maintained. So that was definitely part of the conversation. The Modesto city manager was the third member of the panel, along with our sales tax consultant, Jared Boygan. And so it was just the tale of two cities and how each one approached the measure, and our focus was very much on making sure that a very conservative, fiscally conservative council felt comfortable that we'd done everything we could before we asked for additional revenue.
And continuing the accountability. And, you know, there are a lot of cities in, in the county that actually have a higher sales tax, and none of them are doing this. I mean, none of them are actually accountable to their residents, so I'm really proud that we've actually been able to do that, you know. When I, when I was at Sandag, I looked around and I went, gee, there's a lot of cities that, you know, even both of our neighbors to the city, our, our city neighbors, Escondido and Vista, both of them have them, even Oceanside, and none of them actually have a, a lean department. So I think it would be prudent for all of them to get on board with that, being smart with our taxpayer monies.
Yep. Thank you for sharing that. It was really one of the, I think, the best panels that, that we had. One other quick announcement on the league, we, we had a lot of attention on S B seventy-nine. I think all of you saw that the governor did end up signing S B seventy-nine into law. I didn't have the opportunity to look at what is the final version of S B seventy-nine, considering that it underwent so many changes and amendments. So I'm thinking for next time, we'll have an update on what S B seventy-nine looks like.
Michelle, could we please have, if it's not already done, which it might be done, I haven't checked, could we have my- Could we have Michael, our legislative staff, get an update on the website for our housing laws? Because you can go to our website now. I had requested this a while back, so I know for sure it's there. And I've gone to it many times because I share that with people. And that, and by the way, Councilmember LeBlang is just getting comfortable. So she's not leaving. She's just, sorry. Well, they might look over and go, why is she standing?
Very strong point to make.
Anyway, could we make sure that that gets updated on the website? So that we, anything, anything you want to go to, you can check out, find out. Because there have been now, I guess, more than 68, but there were 68 when it first was put on our website, housing bills from 2023 to the date that it was first posted, that had passed, that have taken away our local control, which I talk about this all the time because it annoys me concertably. But if we can please get that up on the website, SB 79, yeah, that would be great. Not that we want to talk about it, but it's reality, unfortunately. And this is why our neighborhood voices is so important. That is bringing, that is hopefully going to qualify for the ballot next year, which would be bringing all land authority back to cities statewide. Taking it out of the hands of the politicians in Sacramento that want to take away our local authority. We don't want that. We don't want them to have any say in what happens in our city as far as land use goes. So that's why that's so important. And we passed a resolution to support that back in 2021. Yes, 2021, in November. Anyway. Any other discussion about that? Seeing none. North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you. We meet on the 23rd.
Okay. North County Dispatch, Councilmember LeBlang.
We meet in December.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We did meet, our last meeting was September the 25th. And one of the highlights that we had is pursuant to our joint powers authority, we are scheduled to reach 100% renewable energy by 2035. And so given the current situation, the changes in the, whether or not we may have accessible or renewable energy, our CEO wants the board to start looking at this issue, making sure that we have current information and then obviously start to make decisions. I, for one, didn't realize how quickly we were to achieve that goal. So it's 2025 right now. That means we have less than 10 years to really achieve 100% renewable. So we do have some challenges to overcome. We did receive a presentation. I thought it was a great start. Part of what the CEO wants to get is a sense of what they should start to look at and target. So we're going to have some tough decisions to make. One of the things that I'll have our city clerk do is include the presentation that was given to us so that our residents have the opportunity to see it on our agenda and for the, for the entire council to look at that.
You know what I would like, because this is pretty obvious that we're not going to be able to achieve that. And we also are not going to be able to achieve the 2035 greenhouse gas reduction targets as well. I think legislatively at the League of California Cities, we need to start talking about reality. And, you know, if we're supposed to be at 100% renewables by 2035 and we're not, then what happens when we're pushing everyone to get an electric car and we don't have enough energy? I don't know. I mean, that, we need to start getting real and honest with the politicians up in Sacramento. Need to start getting honest with the targets and the reality of where we're at today. 10 years is not a long time and I just don't see it happening.
It's not. And I think that's the urgency that we need to start.
So as president of the, at the league in San Diego, can we, can I, can I get you to start talking? Get someone at the state level to start getting real on this? This is crazy. I mean, what are we doing to our residents? We're not even, I don't know. I know I could just get on a soapbox and talk about this for an hour, but I'm not going to do that to all of you. Don't worry. It's just very frustrating because it's not reality.
And these are the conversations that we're having.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City Council Business Visits.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take this.
Okay.
So on, oh my goodness, when was it? A week ago, Monday. Councilman Nunez and I went down to Iliac Golf. And yes, Iliac is an inherited name and it does refer back to the Iliac crest on the human body. And there's a little logo. It's kind of interesting to see. It was founded in 2005. Iliac Golf is an American-made luxury golf apparel and accessory brand known for its craftsmanship, heritage-inspired design and attention to detail. That's Quentin Hill between the two of us. He purchased the company in 2022 while still a junior at San Diego State and he recognized its potential to blend performance wear with timeless style. I'll get through a little bit of this. Okay. What they do specifically, but they do have, they have branched out into custom work, but they do golf designs. They produce premium golf apparel, leather goods and accessory items that are handcrafted right here in San Marcos, 330 Rancheros. So if you know Rancheros, where the ABC Vet Building is, they're right in there, ground floor. They got a nice spot. It's a little small, but they are making great use of the space they have. Their collections are known for blending traditional tailoring with modern athletic function, catering to golfers who value authenticity, performance and sophistication. When we were there, they were making some custom head covers for golf clubs. And so they have contracts now with, was it TaylorMade in Callaway? Where they're, they have their higher-end clientele that want custom golf clubs. They're making, they're having Iliac provide the covers for them. It's really neat to watch. From their San Marcos facility, the company manages product design, prototyping and fulfillment, maintaining full control over materials and production standards. They are expanding into Texas to offer some more opportunities out there. And their products are sold direct to consumer through its website and via golf clubs and boutique retailers across the country. It's recognized for its dedication to ethical sourcing and American craftsmanship, supporting skilled trades and small batch production. Its designs have been, there you go, featured across professional golf circles and are worn by PGA Tour professionals, reflecting the brand's authenticity. And I will say that that particular bag on the right, they just finished that.
The backpack looking one? It's beautiful.
It, we didn't get a price on anything, which is probably a good thing.
It looks very nice, but very high-end.
I think we intentionally did not inquire about the prices.
When I looked at it, I saw the initials that are monogrammed are CM. So I thought, well, we're either buying that for our city manager or for my wife, one of the two, but it's still there. They have some, bottom left is a custom-made airline bag. So it meets the dimensions of a nice bag. It is a carry-on item. They had three, I think I took a picture of one of the, three or four custom monogram machines. So they put it all together. There are people inside that building that are, when I say hand-stitching, not literally with their fingers, but running the machines, putting these things together, cutting. And we did ask the question about the tariffs and the availability of leather goods. They've got a pretty extensive inventory. So they've purchased a lot ahead of time. Some custom Italian leather, some that gives the appearance of being like alligator finish. It's just embossed, but it's really, really nice to look at. And they do not deal with synthetic materials there. It's all high-end and.
Well, it's clearly high-end. I mean, it's beautiful. Look at the, look at the argyle. I don't know if you saw that in person, but the argyle is beautiful. I mean, it looks really nice. I was, I was looking, trying to figure out where it's, where they sell them. And then when I saw boutique, that says everything you need to know.
Gorgeous. You, you could, I suppose, I mean, they were very nice to us. You can't just walk in there wandering because once you go inside their door, you're in their factory. But if you go to their website, they have a pretty good process for identifying what you need. Let you pick out the leather you want, exactly what you want, give you, if not a fair, then an accurate estimate of what it will cost and a timeline. And it's not, it's not Amazon. You're getting, not getting it the next day. But they have a pretty good delivery time and they will give you a fair estimate of when it'll be ready. They'll ship or pick up. It's really, really interesting to see that in a fairly small space in San Marcos.
Love it.
Great visit.
And I do want to add, they did mention that they are expanding or they have expanded to Texas where they, where they wanted to make sure that they had their higher production so they can meet their demands. But they intend to stay in the city of San Marcos for their custom orders.
That's very cool. All right. We have a lot of great businesses here in San Marcos. All right. In our little San Diego County. Okay. Any other discussion or anything? I have one thing that I found out this last week that I was not happy about. That is Prop 1 funds. I found out from the county of San Diego that that means we're going to, you know, it's to pay for, you know, invest in housing and facilities like that. Well, shocking, you're all going to be shocked about this because I talk about this all the time, what a shell game the state is. And I don't know why I'm on such a roll about the state. It just happens to be right now. I don't know why. Anyway, I found out that there is now going to be a total D or a significant D investment in actual prevention. So the money that actually Prop 1 funds to pay for beds and facilities is going to actually be taken away from, shocking, from prevention. So the prevention dollars are much less than they, yeah, this is what I heard directly from the county.
They recycle the numbers. This is the Prop 1 we just passed two years ago?
Yes. But, but you know how they say, oh, it's new money? Well, yes, it's new money, but they take that money and then they fund something else and then they actually take it away from something else. Anyway, it's a shell game. And yes, less money for prevention. So that was very disappointing to me because, I mean, let's face it, we, you know, tonight, a lot of our meeting was about how important prevention is. Anyway, and I've been hearing grumblings of it, but actually I heard it out loud. So I wanted to share that with you all because I don't know about you, but I'm extremely frustrated by all of this. And just like, you know, our whole, you know, discussion of homeless and all of that, we're not doing the right things. We're not spending money on the right things. But anyway, so the state Prop 1 funds taking away from prevention. So just wanted to make you all aware. More good news. All right. And yes.
Real quick, this last Sunday, the Chamber of Commerce here in San Marcos hosted the Harvest Fest. I know at least three of us had booths there to interact with the public and hear from our residents at that. And it was a huge success. The weather was gorgeous. The attendance was maybe record-breaking. And it was just phenomenal. So thank you to the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce.
I gave away 500 flags.
Wow.
I know. And then, and then I was lucky enough to be a judge at the Build a Scarecrow that our own Halanda Dairy, a 75-year business here in San Marcos, longer than we've actually been a city. Anyway, Halanda Dairy hosted that. It was really cool. They bring all this stuff and then people get to make their own scarecrows. So it's Build a Scarecrow. Anyway, they'll be back next year. So if you didn't get to code this year, you might check it out next year. Anyway, a lot of fun. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.